This time I'll call to order the York County Council Agenda Meeting for October 6, 2025. Our first order of business is I will recognize the Honorable William Bump Roddy for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Let us stand. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for allowing us to come together once again. We thank you for our life, health, and strength. We ask that you lift those up that stand in the need, and we ask that you build those up who are even stronger that serve our community, that help others that are in need. Lord bless this council as we deliberate the issues going forward for our council, for our community, and for our constituents. Lord bless these proceedings, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight. We do not have any oath of office that we need to do tonight. We do have one appearance, and I'll start with this. Most folks, you know, when they go to work, they do their eight hours, they clock out, they leave. Some folks, they go to work and they lay it all out on the line. They give it everything they have. And then you have a very small fraction of people who actually come to work and they give it their heart. We have the fortunate ability tonight to recognize one of those people who comes to work and gives her heart. Linda Norris has been with the county for 23 years. She served as the county executive assistant to the county manager. She's been through several managers, and she has been through several council members. And I can tell you, in all the times that I've known her, she has always come to work with a smile, with a positive attitude, and with a servant's heart. And that's rare. That's very rare. On behalf of the council, and on behalf of the citizens of York, I want to thank Linda for your service to our community. I know that you've got some more fun things to take a look at. You know that we wish you well in your retirement. As a new grandmama myself, I'm jealous of the time that you're going to get to spend with your grandbabies. But I know that you're also still around. If something starts happening, you've told us you'll come back if you need to. But I do want to recognize our county manager who's going to give some more information and...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. It's great to be here this evening. It's great to be joined with Ms. Linda Norris, who has faithfully served this county. We've got to celebrate Linda last week as part of her retirement party. I know many of y'all came. It was a testament to who she is for York County to see everybody that came. There were old county managers that came, there were previous council members that came, and it was a great convening for everybody just to catch up and to remember Linda and what she's meant to this county. So Linda started in 1985 and spent time over at the hospital at the medical indigent office. She also served in the planning department for a couple of years before going to teach for almost 10 years in the community. And anybody that knows Linda, she's definitely a teacher. She taught me a lot in the one and a half years I worked with her, and she does it with grace and understanding and humbleness. And that really speaks to Linda as a servant leader. Linda has cared for so many employees. So she missed York County after teaching for a few years, and she decided to come back in the early 2000s and served five of the seven county managers that York County had. And she did that with grace every day, as you shared, Madam Chair, putting her entire energy into not just this organization, but the community. Linda has led so many employee recognition events over the years. Her heart has really been to care for employees and meet them where they're at, be somebody to listen to and answer their questions, but also welcome them. She definitely welcomed me a year and a half ago, and I owe my success and my ability to understand the organization and connect with the community much to Linda and what she shared with me in her time here. I think the biggest thing that I want to make clear is she's had a huge heart for this organization and this community, and she's demonstrated that every day. Linda has made a huge difference in this organization and seen it through a lot of changes and a lot of different leaders. And she showed up every day like it was the same to accomplish her goal of caring for our staff, for caring for y'all when you had questions, but also this community. So Linda, you're already missed. I know this is just day one of your retirement, and she did text me this morning, so she definitely missed us. But I just wish you the best in this transition. I'm so thankful that your daughter-in-law, Tessa, and your grandson, Judd, could be here tonight, and that your whole family was able to join at the retirement party. You were definitely blessed. We all understand what's next for you and your heart for that, and we also know that your heart for this community is going to be there as well. So we know this isn't goodbye. I look forward to connecting with you and meeting with you and catching up, and you're always welcome at the government center. But I really wish you the best in this transition. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you, Linda. Thank you so much.
I have just a few words, because then I'll start crying if I carry on. But I just want to thank everybody. It's been a blessing to serve and be here with the council through the years and with the county manager's staff and seeing them love and grow together and work together to accomplish so many things in life. And the employees, I'm definitely going to miss their hugs and prayers. And our citizens through York County 101 has just been a privilege to see them after the end of the nine months to say, wow, I didn't realize that's the way York County worked, and that we love it, and they start referring friends. So I want to definitely miss that, but I think it's a wonderful program because it has introduced them. You hear from your neighbors, sometimes it's not always the correct. So for them to see hands-on, it's been a blessing. So I'm going to miss all that and miss y'all, and I thank you for your prayers throughout the years, and I will continue to look forward to seeing y'all here and around York County. Thank you all.
Thank you, Linda. If y'all don't mind coming forward, you can bring your family too. Let's get a picture. And we do have one other council member who wants to speak before you leave.
And of course, you knew it had to be me, Linda. I just want to say, you know, as a new council member coming on back in 2011, Linda was real inspirational and instrumental into helping me get my feet under me. She welcomed me in just like family. When I would bring Trey up, she's known Trey since he was one or two years old. Trey's now 18, 19 years old, off in college. But when you keep in contact with people as much as we did, you know, you become family. And so I feel like a family member's retired. And when you were going through your situation, it touched our family. You were in our prayers. I didn't expect a tear up. But we're going to miss you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
It's like saying a quick word.
Sure.
Linda, again, just to piggyback off the comments here, you are like family to us. You're the service with a smile. I tell you, you're inspirational for us, where we all came in and with the program 101 that you're in and oversaw and educated us, again, to us, your family, and we'll be always thankful for everything you do, and we're looking forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you, Linda.
I feel weird transitioning now to something else. It is like family, and we do, once again, want to congratulate you on being able to do something fun, and we wish you well in your retirement. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for council to hear from residents who sign up on the forum before our meeting starts. We do have a good bit of business and a large agenda to get through, so we have to limit folks' comments to two minutes. If you have signed up and I call your name, if you'll come forward and give your name and address before you begin speaking. And I think our timer's working, but if you will look on the screen, it will let you know. We never know if it's working or not, but hopefully it's working tonight, because then I don't have to work the timer. When you, if you'll pay attention to the screen, it'll let you know when your time is out, and if you will kindly turn off your comments then, then I don't have to do it for you. I will say that there are a number of items that are, at least a couple of items that are public hearing tonight. If you're here to speak on those items, I ask that you wait and put those comments at the public hearing, because then those comments will be with the transcript and will be connected to that item when the meeting is posted. First up, Dorinda Patel.
Hi, my name is Dorinda Patel, 2216 India Hook Road. It's a convenience store, and it's a rezoning issue. Back in February 21, I went through a rezoning, even though it was been a commercial property for 40 years. We went from RC 1 to BD 3. It was approved and under conditions. There was 13 items which needed doing. The council cut it down to seven. Out of those seven, six have been done, and one is remaining, which is the sheltering the dumpster. I'm having difficulties with the planning guys to where to put the fence. They're telling me to move it five feet inwards, but where I'm proposing to put the fence, I have a diesel pump in the same line with that, and I don't see how that's going to be any different. If that road ever gets widened, they'd have to move my diesel pump and my tanks, not just the fence. So the third is a final reading, which, after I do this, then there's a final reading to be rezoned. So I'm just asking for your help to understand how to go about finishing this rezoning.
Thank you, sir. Michael Pruner.
Good evening, council. I'll try to keep this brief. Michael Pruner, 841 Hollis Lakes Road, Rock Hill, here to speak to you tonight about the Clover impact fee. I'm also the president of York County Home Builders Association. I delivered to council this week both a letter from our state and national organization as well as a copy of the impact fee law. To be familiar with that, one section I'll point out tonight, Section 6-1-94, amount of impact fee. The governmental entity is bound by the amount of impact fees specified in the ordinance and may not change for a higher or additional impact fee unless the number of service units increase or the scope of development changes. We're working with a CIP from 2020. Unless that's updated, the dollar amount cannot legally be changed by state law. Again, we support a $4,000 impact fee and carrying that forward. Secondly, the county is not currently notifying people that pay the impact fee that there can be a service or other credit on that fee, and that needs to be looked into. The last thing that I'll point out, since we don't have a counter, and I'll keep it brief, this is from the 2020 study done by Tischler-Balice on page 33 on affordability and impact of affordability. And if you just look at the numbers here, and I know we're not 2020 and it's five years, but I don't even believe in 2020, you could buy the average new single-family home for $213,000 and finance it at 4.03%. That's not realistic. Those numbers need to be updated for everybody and to show the impact fee and to show what affordable housing is in the county. Being a 20-year Realtor, a member of the Carolina Canopy Association of Realtors, there hasn't been even a mobile home sold in the school district for that price in the last 360 days, much less listed. What's underlined there at the top, can we scroll down on that just a little bit here? In the paragraph the other way, so I can see the top. This came off of board docs off of the county's, off of the school district's website. "Impact fees result in land values to decrease, placing the burden on landowners and not on the future homeowners and renters." Think about that as a council member for a minute. And now we're saying before, it's on the development. Development pays for development. This new development needs to be taxed. This new development needs to have this impact fee. Yet it's not the new development that they're saying in this study that takes the brunt of this. They're saying we're going to devalue the land that people already own in the county. Okay? That's a statement. That's a statement that's on the webpage of the county. That's a statement that's on the webpage of the school district. Is that the truth, or is the truth, impact fees are paying for future development?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Peggy Upchurch.
Hello, and thanks for your time. I am Peggy Upchurch. I am 14, Sunrise Point Court, Lake Riley or Clover, South Carolina. I'm here tonight to ask y'all to reconsider zoning, that piece of, rezoning, that piece of property on 274 and 49. It's currently up for third reading on the consent agenda, and three reasons. One reason is that prior to your first reading, you did not have access to all the opposition emails that were submitted to the Planning Commission. For some reason, the county council didn't get it. I would like for y'all to be able to have access to that information. Secondly, on the second reading for consent agenda, it needs to have a unanimous vote. On the second reading, I understand it did not have a unanimous vote from the county council, so I would like for you to reconsider it. Secondly, the commercial corridor. You have an 11-mile stretch of road, which is a main thoroughfare linking Rock Hill with York County via 274 and Busterboard Bridge. The three miles between Busterboard Bridge, Lake Riley, and now on Southbound to 55 is basically a commercial district. Harris Teeter is going in at the intersection of 55 and 274. That's going to continue in its development. That's two miles north of where this current rezoning is. And south of it, four or five miles south of it, you have the intersection of Selene 160 and Selene's Bypass linking the 274 south and north. So you've got major commercial areas in that area. So I would like for you to really consider whether or not we need another redistricting point. Where's my monitor? 150?
Apparently the timer's not working.
Okay, quickly. But lastly, that is a major thoroughfare, again to repeat, linking Rock Hill to North Carolina. It is a major excavation route. Catawba Nuclear Power Plant has 700 and some employees. Should something happen, and we never know, but should something happen to the Catawba Nuclear Power Plant, there has to be a mass evacuation. How are you going to get the 700 employees plus all of those residents in that area out safely? I would humbly ask that you check with and work with Duke Power to see how this fits into their evacuation plans.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Frank Jurnak. I might ask our clerk just to keep time, since we seem to have an issue.
Evening, council members. My name is Frank Jurnak. I live at 2591 Lower Sandy Drive in Fort Mill. I'm here tonight to speak about the wastewater discharge permit issued to Sylfab Solar. Sylfab will use about 1.2 million gallons of water a day, which is more than the approximate daily uses of all of Tega K. Sylfab will discharge up to 1.1 million gallons of water each day into the Rock Hill wastewater sewage treatment system, and most of that discharge will be pretreated toxic waste. This is not ordinary toxic waste. Sylfab's own found and confirmed it will contain heavy metals, such as lead, mercury, arsenic, cadmium, nickel, silver, along with toxic chemicals, organics, such as benzene and trichloroethylene, all linked to cancer, neurological harm, and reproductive risk. Yet, instead of requiring strict compliance from the start, the county has granted Sylfab a two-year interim period without compliance. This means our rivers, drinking water, and children are being contaminated in the interim. We deserve better. We ask the council to pause this permit until three basic safeguards are in place. A community health impact assessment, independent verification that Sylfab's system can handle the toxic wastes, proof that they can meet final pollution limits on day one, not two years later. This is not about opposing renewable energy. It's about accountability and protecting families who live here. Council members, your voice matters. Assist on stronger protection before a single gallon of toxic waste is discharged. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Johnny Neelands.
I'm applying to the court.
John Worth.
Good evening. My name is John Worth. I live on Amberly Crossing in Fort Mill. Let's go back to early September when the water main break occurred affecting parts of Fort Mill and Tega K. The clarity and detail of the communication was at best pathetic. To quote a portion of the boil water advisory, "The advisory only applies to customers who experience low or no water pressure in Fort Mill-Tega K area." Isn't that great? Low pressure or no pressure starting when? How low is low? Which areas of Fort Mill-Tega K? How about a list of neighborhoods or a map? Here's the problem. Our water pressure at my house varies. In our neighborhood, some thought the advisory applied, others did not. People's health was put at risk and rendered the advisory meaningless. So let's fast forward. What will be different when Sylfab has a toxic chemical release, or worse yet, an explosion? Quick response with precise and timely communication will be required to limit injury and loss of life. I-77 will have to be stopped and rerouted. Coordination with Mecklenburg County will be required. An evacuation plan has to be assembled and distributed. Have we demonstrated the ability to do any of this effectively? USC Emory and many others have laid out the risks for you in numerous council meetings. This county has done nothing meaningful in response. These are highly toxic chemicals, close to two of the most at-risk residents, school-aged children and elderly living in assisted living facilities. Our ability to respond and communicate was on full display over Labor Day weekend, and it was awful. If we can't manage the risks for a water main break, we can't manage the risks related to Sylfab.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
David Blue.
Hello, I'm David Blue, 3806 Marlet Drive. Here to talk about the impact fees. $15,000, 30-year loan, 6%. Fifteen thousand dollars, thirty-year loan, six percent, cost of taxpayer seventeen-thousand some odd dollars in interest alone. In addition to that, when impact fees were first done in Fort Mill, the people voted on it in that school district. We don't have that here. If state statute still says it's a matter of a vote by the people that live in the district, you can't circumvent state statute by local ordinance, period. Set case law. Also, you know, on two-seventy-four over Wiley that, coming through Lake Wiley, the roads are jammed already, everything over through there. But, you know, that's way of living out there. It's just going to add more people trying to get in and out of a road, get across a four-lane road where they don't have an access to go through there at all, except to go in the center lane and then look to make a turn. It's inviting a disaster, especially at five o'clock. Duke Power have seven-hundred employees, they're going in and out also. But back to the impact. You can't circumvent state statute by local ordinance. And it is set case law. I don't know if they've changed it, but that's what it was when Fort Mill. What we're looking at is Fort Mill went two-and-a-half times what the taxpayers authorized at twelve thousand dollars, up to thirty thousand. What we want, what they want here in Clover is go four thousand to fifteen thousand. That's a three, three-and-three-quarter times increase. That is not acceptable at all to any of us, period. You look at the dollars, I mean, come on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Scott Kokenhour.
Hey, everybody. Scott Kokenhour, one-two-two, West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood in downtown Fort Mill. Hey, I was able to speak at RFAZ's last Friday. It was roundabout week for SCDOT. So anyway, I actually pulled some information off of North Carolina Department's website. I'm a big fan of them, where they've installed them in North Carolina. Total crashes are down forty-one percent. Fatal and injury crashes are down seventy-six percent. And head-on collisions are down seventy-five percent. So been involved in one that I wish would have been a roundabout. I had a friend out in Union County on Potter Road that was involved in a head-on over there, and it took him years to get over it. And anyway, so I'm a big fan of those. So I'm also here to speak about Consent Agenda item number fifteen. I ask you to pull it out of that and bring it up and defer that item. RFAZ has been working on SS4A, Safe Streets for All. So we'd like to go ahead, and since this project won't be started until, RFAZ will a hundred percent adopt that, we'd like to go ahead and see if we can include SS4A in there. And also, the Fort Mill Parkway overlay was implemented before Penny's Four. So I'd just like to make sure that our pedestrian pathways in this area, this part of Penny's Four are correct at that time. And unfortunately, I got to bring up track number twenty-three. That's me. We did a Task Six back on the original one-point-one-million-dollar update. And I saw on ten-six of twenty-four, the budget for this project has gone from twenty-seven million to seventy-four-point-three million. So I am trying to get a hundred percent documentation on how Task Six was performed for us, so I can get that. And also, if we're going to approve the dollar amount tonight, we spent seventy-four, almost seventy-four thousand dollars on that, and we have not seen any documentation on that. So hey, thank you for your time and everything you do.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to recall Johnny Neelands. I think there is no public hearing tonight. If you want to speak tonight, now is your time. You're passing, all right. Matthew James.
Good evening, council. My name is Matthew James. I live at eleven-sixty-six Wendy Road in Rock Hill. And I'd like to urge you to reject the increase idea on the impact fee. I work for Clayton Homes, as you can see from my name tag. I'm really not here as a home builder, but as a citizen of York County. I meet every day with aspiring homeowners, most of whom are not only stressed, but desperate to improve their living conditions and urgently reaching for the American dream through homeownership. Everybody knows that homeownership has gotten prohibitively expensive. That's a regular topic of conversation. And though I know you really can't do anything about the increase of cost of goods and labor and land and so on, I would urge you, for the sake of our fellow citizens who are striving for that cornerstone of the American dream, to seriously reject this idea. Homeownership should be more affordable. It should be more accessible. And we should be predisposed to bristle against any impediment or obstacle that would delay it for our fellow citizens. And I wish I could make their case for you as they make it for me day by day. I wish you could talk to them. I'm sure you know about what's going on in the county. I'm not suggesting that you're out of touch. But I just want to echo the voices in, among our neighbors, that are constantly yearning and pleading for more affordable options. And I would ask that you consider that to their favor and for the good of York County. Thanks for all you do, for making York County a great place to live. I've been a citizen of York County for thirty years now, and we appreciate your commitment to us.
Thank you, sir. As we move to Consent Agenda, I will, we have a rule on council that any one council member has the right to pull out any items in Consent Agenda if they want and pull them into regular business. I've received a request from Ms. Cloninger to remove five and fifteen, and those will go to one and two in old business. Are there any other changes before the motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Consent Agenda is approved. Move now to our first public hearing item. "Council to conduct a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement in special source credit revenue, special source credit agreement and by, by between York County, South Carolina, and Pratt Rock Hill Corrugating LLC and/or a related entity thereto and one or more sponsor affiliates, including SP Rock Hill Legacy East Number Two LLC and/or a related entity thereto. All such companies collectively were previously known to York County as Project Quicksilver with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source revenue credits and respective investment in related infrastructure to amend the multi-county park agreement between York County and Chester County to include the site of the project and other matters related thereto." Any comments from management before we open public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number two, public hearing. "Resoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number twenty-five dash thirty-seven, tax map number six-seven-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-three, to rezone from UD to RSF thirty-point-six-one acres in District Four."
Tom Stewart, long-range planner. Good evening, everybody. So this property is southeast, outside the city of Rock Hill, just west of I-77. It actually runs just off the right side of the map here. The applicant intends to combine and consolidate this property with its neighboring lot. This lot was actually rezoned similarly from UD to RSF thirty about two years ago. It's about nine-and-a-half acres in size. Combined, it'll be almost ten. Currently, the lot is vacant. You can see there's a lot of vacant space here. This is a very rural corridor. There are lots of single-family homes, as well as a couple of home operating businesses. Given its proximity to the city of Rock Hill, we have a lot of UD here. And you can see there are some other properties that have already rezoned to RSF thirty. To kind of break down what's going on in these UD zoning districts, again, R is residential, C is commercial, a good smattering of primarily residential in this area. This is all municipal infill, and so we like to defer to what the city of Rock Hill thinks. And they have it all as interstate employment. You kind of think of this as roughly our I-77 corridor employment designation, designed for manufacturing and distribution uses. We recommend approval of this request with the following condition. Given that we're creating a non-conforming lot, since the lot is currently below the thirty-thousand-square-foot minimum required in RSF thirty, it just needs to be recombined within ninety days of rezoning approval. And it is not consistent with the future land use map of Rock Hill, and so it's not consistent with ours. But we see that a lot of the other properties along Porter Road are residential in use and character, if they're not already, RSF thirty. And this will remove another legacy UD district from the map. By unanimous vote, Planning Commission recommended approval as well with the above condition.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Mr. Roddy?
So the applicant has thirty days to combine it with the bigger lot?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to old business. We do have the items from consent that we will read. Item number five, rezoning action. Consider third reading, case number twenty-five dash thirty-five, tax map number five-five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-seven-one-eight, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and thirty, to rezone from RMX-ten to GC five-point-four acres in District Two. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay, so the reason I pulled this out of consent, first of all, I really did intend to vote nay at the last meeting, but I didn't quite get the whole wording out. So that's why I wanted to go on record. And I would like to emphasize the fact that the community, I don't think was clearly heard on this issue. There were several emails sent to the Planning Commission that they never received. And then, in fact, we didn't receive them either. So I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to think about that, that we really need to have feelings about this community. And they, they expressed their feelings about the fact that that area, they would like to have a special study done so that it would not end up like what's going on on two-seventy-four. So that was why I wanted to pull that out and express that for the community.
Any other discussion?
So, yeah, quick question on this. So from a traffic standpoint, do we have an understanding of how much impact there is going to be on this from the change?
So at the rezoning stage, traffic impact analysis is not required. So when they go to do their civil construction plans, they'll have to identify the exact uses. They'll have to do the traffic study at that point when they go to develop the site. But it's not required for the rezoning stage.
So, okay. And what was the total number of units that we were talking about here for this location?
They're not planning on any dwelling units? Is that, is that your question?
No, but I mean, as far as, as far as with this location, what do you estimate that would go into this location? I just want to be clear on this.
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe they had a draft. A relatively small site, so I believe they planned on doing a small strip center by their conceptual plan here, which they're not bound by. But there's not a whole lot of land here. They're showing one, two, three, four, five buildings in their concept plan.
And the cut-ins, is it one single cut-in to that property? One in, one out?
Yeah, so it'd be off of Concord Road instead of off of Hansmill.
Any other discussion?
I'd say a quick question. So if we didn't approve this rezoning to do general commercial, what's the, what's the current use that they could put there?
Yeah, the current district is RMX-ten, so they could do residential at lots of ten-thousand square feet or greater.
Okay. Now, I've traveled two-seventy-four, and of course, you see, certain parts, you see maybe a, a small business. I'm not sure if I would welcome residential, just continue to go there. You know, at some point, you need that commercial aspect, because here we are talking about impacts on schools, and we all know commercial pays a little more than residential. And commercial does it impact our schools that we're having such a large problem with now in Fort Mill, Clover, and everywhere else? So I don't, I don't think general commercial is going to hurt the area. Two-seventy-four is four-lane. It's probably better suited for commercial than residential. So that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Any other discussion? All's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen in consent. "Council to approve contract amendment number two with STV Inc. in a not-to-exceed amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents for Project seventeen-two-two-eight dash oh-oh-four Sutton Sprat, Fort Mill Parkway Widening." Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. So there was some questions from the community about this item, as well as I think council members had some questions also. So I think we have staff member, is that right?
So we, we can speak to this, this project and what stage we're at in the project? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yeah.
Patrick's here, and we can, we can answer any questions that y'all have about the importance of this project.
Certainly. So the project right now, we are on the back end of right-of-way acquisition. We intend to submit final plans to DOT probably sometime this winter. That'll be a process back and forth. We'll get comments back. We'll have to address those. We also still have to submit to DEHEC, which I guess is now is DES, to get our NOI permit. That'll happen after we get our final plans approved. So right now, we're probably looking at late twenty-six, early twenty-seven for construction to actually start.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, so I do have a quick question. In regards to the sidewalk projects, as we look at CMAC and as we look at our funding coming from there, I think that there was a, you know, an interesting point brought up in regards to the impact of possible future funding as far as roadways or walkways, as opposed to moving forward with this, and would that interfere with opportunities from RFAZ's to get some funding as far as that goes?
Not necessarily on this type project. This is more of a road widening project. Typically, the CMAC or TAP grant funding, that's typically more for specialized projects where it's just sidewalk or just a multi-use path. This project does incorporate bike lanes and sidewalks into the widening project, but we wouldn't necessarily apply for a grant through TAP or RFAZ for that.
Yeah, I thought it included it, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And I know there was a question about Safe Streets for All, and that's a federal grant program.
That's a Safe Streets for All is a federal grant program. RFAZ is putting together, I believe, an action plan for that, but that wouldn't necessarily impact this project.
Any other discussion? All's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We move now to new business. First item, "Council to consider reading of an ordinance reviewing and updating the public education facilities impact fee imposed on all new residential development in Clover School District Number Two pursuant to York County Ordinance Number Thirty-Twenty, to revise the established impact fee on new residential development for a single-family detached dwelling unit to fifteen-thousand-thirty-five dollars, to revise the established impact fee for a multifamily dwelling unit to seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty, and to revise the established impact fee for a manufactured home unit to nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, to authorize a revised intergovernmental agreement between York County and Clover School District Number Two defining the respective rights- defining the respective rights, responsibilities, and obligations of the parties regarding the impact fee to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Are we, were we intended to have some information presented first? Or how are you planning to handle that?
Yes, there's a PowerPoint.
Okay.
Do we need to withdraw our motions, or?
Nope, we can just operate with the motion and the second.
Right, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the county council. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to discuss the impact fee for Clover School District. I am joined tonight, first of all, I'm Sheila Quinn, Superintendent for Clover School District, and this is year eight. Feels like a lot longer than that, and it feels like I was just here asking for an impact fee just yesterday. I can't believe five years have gone by. I am joined tonight by two people, Dr. Mark Hopkins, our Chief Operations Officer, and he's going to be standing in tonight for Tishler Vice. Carson Vice could not be here this evening. He may be available for the public hearing should we get to that case next time. He had a hearing somewhere else in another state. I'm also joined tonight by Ken Love, our Chief Financial Officer, and we will be happy to answer any questions we can. We're going to try to answer Carson's questions as best for him. And if there's something that the council needs to know that we cannot answer, we certainly will get that information to you. Well, we do have a presentation tonight, so I'm going to kick us off with that presentation, and I believe the clicker is here, so. Just some background information. Clover School District is five years into our 10-year capital improvement plan. That plan was developed in 2019. It is due to be revised again in 2029. It's likely to be revised in 2028, but it's not due until 2029. And in, we're five years in, and in 2020, we updated part of that plan and brought it to you as a part of an impact fee study that was approved by the council and an impact fee was awarded to Clover School District in January of 2021. In the 2020 impact fee study, and in the award of that that happened in 2021, the maximum allowable impact fee was $15,014 for a single family, but what was awarded by the council was $4,000. For multifamily, the maximum allowable that was justified in the study was $7,419, and what was awarded was $1,976. For mobile homes, what was justified in the study was $9,828, and what was awarded was $2,618. And those are the fees that we have been collecting for the last five years. Under the Comprehensive Plan Act, South Carolina Code 629510, it requires an updated capital improvement plan every 10 years. And as I said, we're five years into our 10-year study. A review of the plan by the planning commission must be done at least every five years, particularly if you're going to ask for an impact fee. The Impact Fee Act also validates that a review of the impact fee must be done on the same schedule as the comprehensive plan. So because the comprehensive plan was reviewed by the planning commission at the five-year stage, we are at the five-year stage for the impact fee. All laws have been followed in that regard. The South Carolina impact fee requirements also state several items. First, that you must maintain an impact fee revenue in an interest-bearing account. We have done so over the last five years. You must spend the money within three years of the scheduled date for the construction in the CIP. The scheduled date for our two schools is 2026, so we must spend it by 2029. So that gives us time to spend the impact fees that could be generated this go-around. There must be a published annual monitoring report that's conducted by the county. The county does that for the council. I'm not sure what month you get your annual report, but in your next annual report, you will be viewing the Clover School District's impact fees and how they were spent. We're required to send all invoices, all evidence of expenses to the county. We have done so. It requires that any changes to the maximum allowable fee, an updated study be conducted. So we did conduct an updated study. Our primary focus was to make sure that the current maximum allowable of $15,000 for the single family was still a viable number, and that changes in our enrollment, changes in our construction costs, didn't lower that fee, that it was still a viable fee. And so we will be presenting information to you tonight about that. And then finally, it requires us to look at affordable housing, which our impact fee study completes that. The methodology in the impact fee study from 2020 to 2025 has changed. Carson Vice does a different impact fee analysis, excuse me, impact analysis on affordable housing. So that is different from the 2020 study that I think was referenced earlier tonight. So the York County impact fee ordinance matches what the state code requires in law. It talks about what you can spend public funds on in an impact fee. Specifically, it says you can spend it for buildings, equipment, furnishing, and land for an elementary, middle, or high school. And those items are in our impact fee study. It says you can spend it on planning, design, engineering, and construction of buildings, playgrounds, and recreational areas, up to and including your sports facilities, parking, landscapes, sidewalks, internal streets, access roads and driveways. You'll hear us talk about our recreational spaces tonight. And then finally, it says you can use it for systems improvement on site preparation, building expansion, and vehicles. Per South Carolina Code 61920, vehicles, including activity buses, are a legal expense for impact fees. Then finally, just a couple of reminders, just to kind of level set for us in Clover. An impact fee is not a fee on a house. It's a fee based on the students that are generated from a house or an apartment or a mobile home. The students that are generated from a house has to be studied, and it has to be germane to the area that you live in. So a pupil ratio out of the house must be determined so that we know what the impact then will be on schools. It's not the house itself, it's the students generated from different types of dwellings. From the students generated from a dwelling, you have to then figure out what kind of infrastructure needs do you need to support those students? Is it a new school? Is it, in our case, sometimes more activity buses? Is it more land that you have to buy to prepare for growth down the road? All of those things are viable needs. And then you have to determine a cost for each of those so that you can get to what is the actual cost per student that the impact has on growth. Finally, with the impact fee fundamentals, remember that it's a cost that equitably determines what the student impact is across multiple different types of home structures. It's a one-time fee paid at permitting, which is in the ordinance. That's not our choice. That's when the ordinance says it must be paid. It cannot be used to update or upgrade or add-on unless that's generated through growth, so it can't pay our upgrades to our HVAC system or anything like that. And it's not a tax. It's a fee imposed one time on a dwelling. The last thing that I'll say before I answer any questions that you have down the road is that our goal tonight was to first and foremost confirm that our growth justifies the infrastructure that we're building and that there is continued growth in Clover School District, so we will talk about that. We wanted to clarify the costs because the biggest difference between 2020 and 2025 for Clover School District has been the cost to actually build our schools. When we budgeted for the amounts in 2020, we were working on estimates. This 2025 study is actual real construction costs. So there is a change from 2020 to 25 because of the increase in costs to build the elementary and the high school. The most important thing we wanted to do was validate the maximum allowable fee that was originally given to us in 2020, that $15,000 fee for the single family, for example, that it was still justified, that there has been nothing that has changed in our capital improvement plan that would have lowered that number. And I think what you're going to find is, in fact, it went up, not down. And that was even after we didn't include some of the additional things we actually could have included in this fee. We tried to maintain what we thought we needed from our original 2020 study because we're still building that capital improvement plan. We're not building a different one, we're building that plan. And then finally, and foremost, we wanted to help our taxpayers to offset the costs that we're going to have, the overages that we're seeing, particularly in our high school costs, the finishing out of our recreational areas and sporting areas that's going to happen on our high school property. We wanted the growth to pay for that and not our taxpayers to see additional taxes for that. I'm going to ask Dr. Mark Hopkins to come forward now to explain more about our growth and more about the Tishler Vice portion of the study.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark Hopkins. Before I get into the slide, I just want to say, if you look at the State Department of Education site to look up student enrollment, there are three different dates that are given for any year in the historical analysis of that. There's the 45-day, the 135-day, and the 180-day enrollment counts. In Clover, we use, most schools use the 45-day count because although middle school and elementary school enrollment remains consistent, high school enrollment changes from first semester to second semester. For example, in Clover this year, we graduated over 100 students at the semester break. So we had to accommodate for that additional 100 students in the first semester. So that's why we use the 45-day, because that's the maximum number of students that we have. Whoops, excuse me. Okay. So what I've done here is just brought out a comparison between the first study and the second study, that five-year estimation. And you can see what the five-year growth projection, this is based on historical projection, which we shared with the council. We have seen has been the most accurate at predicting what the growth will be for us through the years. You can see the 2019 projection was 39.51, the actual was 43.52 in 2024. Middle school actually was under the projection by 36. High school was just under the projection by 96. But in total, we were 260 over the projection in 2024. Now, I think some questions had come up this week that I wanted to address. We did experience a drop in enrollment, in growth in enrollment, between last year and this year. At the end of 2024, we were at 91.67. Today, we are at 90.77. So you can see that rate has dropped about 90. So our enrollment has not dropped, the rate of growth is dropping a little bit. But we expect that to go back up for a couple of reasons. Let's look at the future growth that we anticipate coming. Based on the town of Clover, they have approved 322 new homes since the inception of this CIP. There are 195 remaining within the township of Clover. In York County, 3,023 approved new homes. There are 2,278 remaining. Of the total remaining approved residences to be built in York County, there are 2,339 single-family and 183 multifamily homes that are approved and not under exemptions for development agreement purposes or for retirement community, like the Gentry. I want to share a little bit about the projected cost from 2019 to today, and I want to first start with a mea culpa. I made a mistake on this slide. I talked a lot in the planning commission about project costs versus construction costs. Project cost is the total cost of the project, which includes not only the construction, but the soft costs that are involved, design, fees, inspections, all of those extra contingencies, all those things that go on top of the cost. So I want to make a correction here. The 2019 estimated project cost was $172, not $147. And that was $156 million from the bond and the $16 million that the district put forth. And in 2019, that estimated cost for a stadium, which was part of that CIP, was $6.25 million. We got an updated cost projected to 2029 from Leitner Management, this year of $17,881,382. The new elementary school, likewise, I made that same mistake. The estimated 2019 project cost was $47 million, not $39, and the actual 2025 cost is $56. You can see there are some cost overages at both of those schools. Additionally, to these two, as part of the capital improvement plan, is elementary, excuse me, the land for potential elementary school number nine. That land was calculated based on the cost of the last four properties that the district has purchased. It is not prorated to $20.26. This is based on our actual amount. There is no land in the high school on this update because that has already been purchased. We don't anticipate that for some time. Additionally, activity buses are included, and it's based on the cost of a 78-passenger with those things with the AC, cameras, et cetera. And the cost of one of those buses today is $144,790. As you can see, we have come up with some challenges with the cost escalation from COVID when these estimations were given and when we planned these construction projects through the last five years. We have been able to meet some of those challenges. I'll invite Mr. Love for to talk about the ways that we have been able to execute and stay ahead of that game up to this point.
Thank you, Dr. Harpkins, and members of the board. I appreciate you letting us have a few minutes to hear some comments tonight. My name is Ken Love. I'm an accountant in Clover School District, Chief Financial Officer. As you can tell with what Mark has mentioned, when these costs exceeded what we expected, we knew that the horse was out of the barn. We had to make some arrangements to get it back in. And what we have done is a multitude of adjusting the various loan capabilities and the various dollars and cents that we had. When we started this project, we had $17 million of capital dollars that had been saved and allocated for capital improvements by our board. And we had $156 million approved by the voters to put into the construction of the high school. That gave us $173 million that could be used to construct and furnish and equip the high school. It's not just construction in those things. When we got to the $172 million, that put us in a situation of having to do some additional work. And that's where we ended up with the item called the SOB bond, Special Obligation Bond. That bond does not pledge the full faith and credit and taxing ability of the school district, but it does pledge the use of equipment as collateral that we may think in the world. That allowed us to get to roughly the construction costs that we think we're going to need of about $190 million. And I say think we're going to need because we're still not 100% complete with the construction costs. Because we still have construction going on, and there may be some additional costs that we will run into as construction gets started. Now, we're laddering the payments of these bonds back. We'll issue the full place of the $156 million by this time next year. In the interim, we have been doing some short-term bands, bond anticipation notes, and paying them back periodically because we're not drawing down the full $156 million at one time, very much like we would use personally as our own house, that we would draw our construction payments periodically and then set the permanent financing when it's finished. We also have used $6 million between the elementary and the high school of impact fees that has helped cover some of this cost. You notice an 8% number there. We also had available the 8% money that we can borrow each year, but we chose as a district to put that into the construction cost of the elementary school. And we have done that over a period of three years. We would borrow that money to get started in the fall and pay it back in the spring. Borrow another third roughly in the fall and pay it back in the spring. And borrow the last part of it this fall and pay it back over about four years. That allows us to get the elementary school constructed and paid within a better of about seven or eight years, unless things change. And we too are not 100% complete with the construction there because we've run into a little bit more rock than we anticipated. But what that does is it allows us to get both of our schools constructed within a short, relatively short period, and we can open in the fall of 2026. This gave us a challenge as finance people, along with accomplished municipal advisors, because our board said they want us to stay within a 46-mile debt limit because that's what our voters said at voting time, that they felt they could be comfortable with. That's what we were expecting to have on the $156 million to start with. By laddering these payments and paying all short-term debt in a short period of time, we have been able to stay within that 46 miles. we have been able to stay within that 46 bills that we promised the voters for a couple of three years we have. So far, we've been able to do that. We would anticipate doing that a little further along in the spring in the future as we're able to get these buildings finished and as we perhaps have a slight increase in assessment over that period. We can't promise that five years out because there's too many things that we don't know. But thus far, we have stayed within the 46 bills that our board set for us, and we have done that, that we promised the voters at election time. And we have been able to get these schools under construction, not within budget, but within the capability of being able to pay for.
These next few slides, I just want to go over and try to replace Carson. I am not Carson Bice. I do not work for Tischler Bice. But I did watch him present this again on film to the Planning Commission. So, I made notes, and I'll try to go through these slides and represent them as best I can. As you know, you've heard Tischler Bice before. They work on, they've done more impact fee and infrastructure financing work in South Carolina than any other firm. They've been in here in York County for quite a while with York, Clover, and Fort Mill school districts. The first step, as Dr. Quinn mentioned, in developing an impact fee is to develop the student generation rates. And what Tischler Bice did, the first step is to use the U.S. Census Bureau, the Puma, which is the public use micro area sample data, which is the area of Clover School District from the 2023 U.S. Census. And that raw data of the number of homes and the number of students is calibrated to the enrollment of Clover School District, which actually, if they calculated that amount with not calibrating to Clover School District, it would also include students that were in private school or in charter school or in home schools. By calibrating it with our enrollment, it eliminates those from this calculation. So, it actually makes the student generation rate a little bit lower. As you can see, a single-family home, the total students generated in elementary, middle, and high is .512 students. For a multifamily home is .276, and for a mobile home is .408. And I'll reiterate, this generation is based strictly on the population, the makeup of houses, and the student population within those houses in Clover School District. So, this is taken directly from our data. Just giving, if you think about it, a single-family home at a student generation rate of .512, for every 100 homes, that would be about 51 new students for Clover School District based on this data. Doesn't seem to be. There we go. Projected enrollment, this is really done, years 1 through 10 are the Lightner Management Group data that has been presented. Years 11 through 20, Tischler Bice extrapolated to be able to generate the credit that's due for debt service on the impact fee, which I'll talk about in just a second. The capital improvement plan, Liberty Hill Elementary School, anticipated occupancy 2026, capacity 900. Roosevelt Middle School is not part of the plan. Lake Wally High School, 2026 fall opening, 2,200 capacity. Future land purchases, which I'll get into some more detail here shortly. School cost factors that are calculated to work through this fee. Just reiterate, middle school fee is not recommended, and there's no component for the high school fee in this update. What they do is they look at the cost per square foot or calculate the cost per square foot of the new buildings. You can see Liberty Hill Elementary is about 450 a square foot, and Lake Wally High School about 474 per square foot. Another component is the land cost. Those are the previous four land purchases the district has made since 2022. The total cost divided per acre, and that cost per acre is 24,602, and that's the amount that was used in the study. It was not prorated to a later date. I'm having trouble with the big button. Back, forward, forward. There is a need to evaluate for credits. That's part of the law. Credits are a way to account for people, homes not double-paying with the impact fee. And those are generated by law in three ways. They must be site-specific. That doesn't apply here. That would be a circumstance where development was in a development agreement with the county, and the resolution outlined that. What's applicable here is a debt service. So, these folks that are building a new home are paying an impact fee, but they're also going to be paying in their property taxes service on existing or potentially future bonds. So, that 10- to 11-year projection accounts for the amount they will pay, so they are credited back an amount that's generated because of that future payment. And dedicated revenues do not apply in York County. That's just an example of what a local option tax. Always have to go back before I go forward. Okay. This is a breakdown of the current issuances that the Clover School District has, the year they come off, and the total amounts of those. Let me make sure I get my wording right here. The projected principal payments on issuances are here for the next several years. What they do is they use this to compare it against enrollment to give a credit to those folks. And you can see the discount rate of the bond is 3.5%, and the net present value of that discount for future debt service is $12,639. Thank you. All right. The maximum allowable impact fee, taking these three areas that we've spoken about, the student generation rate, applying that to the current cost of level standards, which were broken down in what I covered, the total cost of construction per square foot. If you look at that, you break that down between elementary and high school, between the number of students. It's an average cost of about 62,000 for elementary and about 71,000 for high school. Acreage per student breaks down to about 1,191 per student, and then bus cost at 144,790 is about 336 per student. Those are calculated together to give a total gross capital cost per student of 64,045 for elementary and 71,658 for high school. The credit being applied of $12,000 gives a total net local capital cost per student from which the fee is calculated. I'm not sure of the formula on that, so forgive me. If you look at the bottom box here, what this is, this is the updated fee with these numbers that changed from 20 to 2025. The maximum allowable fee for the 2025 report for a single-family home was 21,387, the multifamily home 10,239, and the mobile home 16,125. Now, Dr. Quinn had mentioned the maximum allowable fee from the 2024 report as well, and I will just reiterate that we went into this impact fee update with the goal to at least justify what the maximum allowable fee was when we started this plan and feel like that is the appropriate amount and still appropriate for the conclusion of this current CIP we are in. Can you turn it to the next one? Thank you. There was a question I noticed on a slide earlier about affordable housing analysis, and Dr. Quinn had mentioned that the process through which this is done changed between 2020 and 2025 by Tischler Bice. And I think one of the, I watched the planning meeting again, and he talked, he addressed this question from the Planning Commission about why it changed and why they used this. The example that was shown earlier on the graphic, you said a new home was 231,000, and it's common was, you know you can't buy a new home for 231,000. You can see that data that has been used in the past is not accurate. So, not only Tischler Bice, but other impact fee entities. There is no guidelines in the law about how to address or account for accountability. So, they have gotten together and figured, and they feel like the best way to show affordability is to show the impact on a monthly payment at various interest rates on a 30-year mortgage. And what they've done here is gone through several scenarios at an interest rate and what that maximum impact fee would be over a 30-year loan impacted on a monthly payment. So, that is what they are now using for affordability. I'm not sure. I think that's what they used in the Fort Mill update recently as well. Just a couple of things. Instead of asking Mr. Love to come up, I will share this. The impact fee, as Dr. Quinn said, is imposed only on new housing units built to offset the cost of new infrastructure required to serve that growth. It generates funds that will offset a tax increase to existing residents, and any funding that the district receives from impact fees that we're able to apply reduces a potential tax burden on the public for another bond or extension of 8% or whatever the case may be.
Just one final thing, and then we'll certainly be happy to answer questions. I know you've received several questions. We have two, and so I didn't want to add a slide since we had already sent Mr. Edwards this PowerPoint. But I did put the four or five issues that I have seen raised, questions I have seen raised. The first are activity bus vehicles permitted as an impact fee. Yes, the answer per code 61920, Section 18G, allows vehicles related to public school growth that are above the $100,000 threshold to be used for an impact fee. How many permits were issued and paid in Clover School District for impact fees? 1,988 total permits were issued in the last five years in our district. 1,611 of those permits paid an impact fee. The majority of those, 1556, were single-family. Multifamily had 43, and mobile homes had 26 in five years. How much has been collected? 6,260,000 and 482, $26482 as of September 2025. That's last month. If the maximum allowable had been granted, how much would we have collected? So, we've collected 6 million. We would have collected 27 million in the last five years. That would have more than covered the overages that we've seen at our high school costs, and we would be finishing this project and may not be here tonight. That's the difference between getting the maximum allowable from the last time to this time. And finally, have all Clover School District impact fee funds been spent on allowable expenses? The answer is yes, and we have documented that with the county, and those will be in your next report. You will see all of the impact fees there. We've spent them all through September, and I think in October, since we're here at the beginning, there have been some more pulled, but we've spent everything down in an allowable way. We're happy to answer any questions from the council at this time.
Thank you for the information. I just want to make sure and clarify the information. I heard some comments about changes and from the Planning Commission and updates, mistakes that were put in some of the materials that were provided. I'm assuming that all of the information that was, I haven't done a page-by-page reference. All of that and everything that's been presented tonight has been given to council already. It was in their packets. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. To the extent that council wants to ask questions tonight of the folks that made the presentation, the way that I'll do this is to let each council member have the floor once to make any questions known. And we do have a motion on the floor. After that, I'll let each council member have the floor for discussion purposes. Any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Sheila, looking under the cost-burden analysis, why did they not do a new one?
Which page are you on of the report? This is the Tischler Bice.
It would be page 32 in.
The new, is that the 2025 study?
Yeah. No, this one is the 2020 April.
Okay. That study is no longer germane. We're under the 2025 study.
Right. But why did they not do that analysis over?
The cost, are you talking about for affordable housing?
Well, yeah, the cost-burden analysis caused, if we all suffering through what COVID caused and all that, it looks like to me it would have been relative that they had done that analysis over.
The Tischler Bice, Mr. Bice explained to the Planning Commission, and what Dr. Hopkins was just explaining, is their methodology from 2020 to 2025 changed. The cost-burn analysis that they did in 2020 had some flaws in it. If those flaws often came to question, just like the gentleman who spoke to you earlier said, why would any cost-burn analysis say that there would be a home in Clover School District you could buy at 230,000? There are very few homes. So, they changed their process to the one that we just reviewed tonight to looking at, if you broke down what an impact fee would do to your monthly mortgage payments at different interest rates, that's now how they do the cost-burn analysis. They just have a different method for doing it.
So, first of all, good evening.
Good evening.
So, looking through the numbers here, again, you know, what we went through with Fort Mill, you know, as we went through the process. You know, I always looked at Fort Mill in a certain light that, you know, there is a, what construction that would occur there would probably mainly be done by general contractors that would come in. Very few single properties where people were just putting homes, very few minimal. When I started looking at these numbers, you know, and I know it was brought up tonight, you know, you're looking at about a 300% increase on a lot of these things. You know, I look at, like, for example, mobile homes, I think it went up $5,400 from 1900 to 74. I think you look at single-family homes, 4,000 to 15,000, which is $11,000 difference. You look at the increase from manufactured homes from $2,600 roughly to $9,800, $7,200 increase. That's, you know, it's a huge increase, at least, again, in an area that, and I know a lot of people that are in that area there that are looking to just build single homes, you know? And when you look at trying to absorb that kind of increase, that's a big, that's a make or break on a lot of these people. It really is. I mean, our biggest thing, and again, in Fort Mill, I look at Fort Mill in a different light as I look out into Clover, York, because I think that we have an opportunity in Clover, York to keep affordability on homes, to keep them affordable and make it affordable where, you know, people can start off and buy a home. But when you raise and you go up almost 300% on this thing, I think that's a huge impact. I think the existing school that's going out and will be completed in September, right? I think it is.
July 2026.
July 2026, okay.
We hope to be moving in.
Right. So, the estimated cost, what you're seeing now is what was originally estimated, just kind of, it was much, much more in the long.
The actual costs were much higher than the estimated costs.
Estimates and stuff, okay.
Right.
You know, with what I see here, again, I look at it two different ways. And when I see, where I see an area where we can preserve some low-cost, low-cost homes, I see an increase that, again, I personally cannot swallow myself, again, just because I feel like we need to make sure we keep an area for affordability. So, those are my concerns.
Can I speak to any of those?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, I pulled the slide back up. In 2020, the actual cost that was justified in the study was the 15,000 for single-family, the 74, and the 98. The council chose to lower those numbers to 4, 1,926. That was a council decision.
Oh, yeah.
And we have certainly appreciated those funds, and like I said, we collected 6 million as opposed to 27 that could have handled all these overages and costs that we could have had towards our high school. We're just asking to be treated the same way Fort Mill was treated. They got their maximum allowable both in 2020 and just now. We're actually asking for the maximum allowable in 2020, not the new maximum allowable, which would get us to 21. And we worked really, really hard to make sure we submitted things in the study that would allow our fee to stay somewhere near that 15, and then it still came in higher. We didn't add extra building costs that we may have to add in the next construction plan for administrative buildings and things like that. We simply said, these are the things we need to get us through the next five years. So, we understand and feel very much that affordable housing is important, but we just are asking to be treated the same way Fort Mill was.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing councilmen want the floor for questions.
I'll take a comment real quickly. Appreciate all the residents in the Clover-Lake Wally area sending us the emails. I forwarded my questions over to county staff and our county attorney and received the answers back that I needed. And even listening to the presentation, I've actually had a few more questions answered as well, so thank you. Only thing I'll say is, I realize you're asking for the maximum amount for 2020 when you were awarded 4. when you were awarded for 1,976 and 2618. Why would you not be asking for the maximum allowable amount for 2025? Are you, are you, are you opening the door up for the same thing to happen when you get through the next three years?
We certainly would appreciate any, any consideration for that. The reason we're not asking for it is because we're still in the same capital improvement plan. We, we're not like Fort Mill in the sense that we brought you a whole new study and new buildings. These are the same buildings we were asking for in 2020. Yes, they've come in at a little bit higher cost, and as Ken Love has told you, we've managed to weather that storm with careful construction of our loans and how we're paying those off. We would like to, with the potential of the 2,300 homes that are left, to get the maximum allowable, so we don't have to keep pulling magic out of our hats. And I don't know how much more magic Mr. Love has in him to not have to go back to the taxpayers to help us finish this high school cost, which we think will be, will be paying for through 2029. So, our justification was, this is the same project we originally told you were in that same, and that's why the 15,000, the original 2020s, we were, we were asking for you to stay there.
So a follow-up?
And we understand affordable housing is a question.
Follow-up question then. If you do not get the impact fee, then all of the taxpayers in the area could potentially have to pay for the shortfall. Is that correct? Versus those that are moving into the area with children, whether it's single-family, multifamily, or mobile home, they're coming in with children that are going into the schools. So, everybody's going to pay for it, or the ones that are having the growth would pay for it.
That is correct. That is well said.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I appreciate you being here and giving us this, this information a little deeper than what we've been exposed to so far. I, I did want to touch on one question that I do have, and you may not have this information, it may come later. You talked about how many new homes have been built and what the, the funds that's been raised so far. And we talked about the impact fee impacting people that's moving in, coming to the area. Is there anything in the study or that you've gathered over the last five years that said how many of those new homes were purchased by people moving to the area versus my son going across town buying a new home, or, you know, family getting, giving some land in the sun building, you know? Do we have any information on that? Because we say let growth pay for growth, but I would hate for my son to move to Clover, where if I'm living in Clover, my son wanted to build a home, my son get hits with this impact fee, and he's already a resident. There's no, I don't think there's a way that we can avoid people that live in Clover, that want to stay in Clover, grow up, and want to continue to stay in their own community, and find themselves purchasing a new home, getting hit with an impact fee, like, well, I've been here for 30 years, you know, I've lived with mom and dad. So, is there any information out there that you can gather going forward that could probably track this? It may not even be tracked, it may be asked for.
I don't, to my knowledge, it's not tracked, but I would defer to the county on that. Do we track any data that way? Yeah.
Okay. Well, one of the conversations I've, I've had with, with fellow council members was that, how can we vote for a 30 something, 32,000, 31,000 on impact fee in Fort Mill to support their schools and want to hold Clover to 4,000? Because you're paying for the same brick and mortar, same supplies coming probably from the same, just, you know, factory to get your bricks, to get your cement, to get your steel. You know, it just may take you Clover a little longer to get there grabbing $4,000 versus Fort Mill grabbing $31,000 to go offset their costs. You can get there, but it's, it's the long road with the 4,000. And there's been some conversation about, is $15,000 the right number for Clover? Can the Clover community, can the residents that live there now, whose son or daughter wants to build a home, and even just, can the market support it? You know, one thing I, I'm going to put my professional hat on if I have one, the study says what it says, but the reality of a lot of areas, the question needs to be answered. Can the market, can the home buyers that live in Clover, if they wanted to decide to go purchase a home, can that market support a $15,000 additional cost, well, now 11 more thousand for those residents to purchase a home? I think that's a real big question that a study can't tell us. The study doesn't look at the market, the income of the area, what people are making in the area, for them to still be able to purchase. Now, somebody coming from New York, California, who's probably sold off property and liquidating coming down here, they're buying homes cash money. That's not a problem to them. But when a single individual goes to build a home, they have to pay that 15,000 upfront when they get that building permit. That's a little different apple to swallow versus a builder who's building tract homes and coming in building development. So that's one thing that I think we need to keep in mind. What are we doing to the residents who want to build a single-family home on their own versus going to a major builder? So my question is, can the Clover market sustain or support those fees? Obviously, Fort Mill has absorbed them, and it, it hasn't slowed Fort Mill down at all. But we know those builders are going to add these costs into the cost of the home and cause the homeowner to, to have to absorb it over the 20, 30 years however they finance. So, that'll be one of the questions that I have. Even impact fees are going to raise the tax value of everything else that's going on in the area. You know, we, we, people have said, we need this impact fees to help our Clover residents keep their taxes low. Well, that's not really how it's going to work, because once these values come in and they're elevated, it's going to raise the value of everything else around it. So, homes that don't pay the impact fee are still going to get impacted because the value's going to raise. So they're not totally out of the loop of being impacted with an increased value. So we have a lot of things that, it's a lot of moving parts when this goes. It's not just, well, we can, it's free money. I don't want people to think this is a free money grab. So we, we have a lot of things to consider when we're supporting things like this or when we're not supporting it. It's, it's a real tough decision that we're faced with. I just want everybody to know that it's not easy to say yes, and it's not easy to say no. It's, it's tough.
We certainly do understand that.
And any other, we're not debating the, the issue on the floor, we're asking the questions, so to stick to what I've said before, each council member will get the floor once to ask the questions, and then we'll turn it over to debate on the existing motions. So if you can hold that thought until then. Do you have any other questions? I, I, some folks have reached out, and I appreciate all of the information. I mean, you know, it is, it is very difficult to me, this whole issue of impact fee is, is difficult, and I think it's difficult in Clover, Lake Wile, and those areas, because you're not as homogeneous as Fort Mill is. These are the same comments that we had at the last one. The one comment that I would just ask you about, and I know I will have many more questions, but one of the things that's being suggested is that the bond referendum that was put out to the folks to vote on, that it was based on a certain number of assumptions about what it would look like, what it would be, and that there's a suggestion that the cost overruns were based on overbuilding, or building more than what folks thought that they were approving, or that it was, you know, different. Can you comment on that or respond to that?
The only comment, I, I think, because we got questions at the Planning Commission level that hinted at that, there was a board meeting where we said, where we looked at, our board looked at small high school versus larger high school, small elementary school versus larger elementary school, and we were comparing costs for each, only to give the board some understanding of, you know, what is it that needs to go in this next bond referendum? Do we need to ask the public for a smaller elementary school, but the bigger high school, vice versa? Do we need to go with the bigger high school or a smaller elementary school? So we had costs associated with both of those. What the board said to us is, whatever we get and whatever we do now is going to be cheaper than if we try to get something small now and have to add on to it later. Let's get the most school we can get within the dollars that we have, so that we do it, pay for it, and get the best cost, and get the, get it behind us in terms of payment. So I think some of the confusion may have come from that meeting, because some of the examples had costs that were on slides from that, so I think that's where that came from, but I'm not 100% certain. Okay.
I will just add that the design of the building was done prior to the first bond, and that design did not change going into the second bond. So it's the same school that was designed initially through. We did not add more to it or take, we actually took away from it. When we bid, we cut it into basically 11 alternates to be able to get a bidable amount. And we have added a few of those back, but I, I think we're where we need to be on that.
While you're up here, there was the question too, I mean, my understanding is that cost, cost overruns, or the costs are coming down with construction now. Are you seeing that post-COVID?
Not the numbers that we've seen. Costs are coming, they may come, the amount that we have paid to this point and the amount that we are projected to finish are certainly escalated above what we anticipated in 2019. We have not seen a drop in cost that I'm aware of. I don't know if Mr. Love has gotten any bills and that, but no, the estimates that we keep coming in are based on the numbers that we shared.
All right. Thank you for the information. I'm sure there will be additional questions following that, but that, that'll conclude our question and answer for the presenters.
Oh, I thought you didn't have a question.
I'm sorry, Debbie, did you want to ask?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I read that one right then. All right, now we'll move on to the existing motion that's on the table, and again, allow each council member the opportunity for the floor one time. And the motion on the table is a motion to approve first reading with the requested amounts that were approved from the Planning Commission to full amounts of the 15, 15,035 for single-family, 7430 for multifamily, and 9842 for manufactured home. Do we have any discussion?
I'll start. Let me just say that it is still, just as I said during the, the Fort Mill impact fee discussion, I believe this is a massive government overreach in us debating what another elected board and another government entity is doing. I know that it's in the state law that government, there's only two types of government entities as it comes to development impact fees, which are municipalities and county, but I think that was an oversight at the state level, and, you know, when we're up here deciding what another government agency should be spending to operate their district, you know, we don't want the state coming down here and telling us that our future taxes or our future impact fees are too much and telling us what to do. You know, they need to stay up there in their lanes and do the work that they do. We work on the things that we work on, and the school board does the things that they do. And us regulating what they spend is not our place. If somebody wants to worry about what the school board is spending, then those residents need to vote the school board out and vote in people that are going to represent them the way that they want to be represented. You know, the 1975 Homer Act actually gave the counties an actual governance. Before that, the state decided what counties did. You know, we don't want to roll back to that. We don't want to put those burdens on, on the school districts. We need to let them decide their own destiny. You know, we don't go through their operations budget and pick out that their taxes are too high. Why is this any different? We don't have control over what they're doing. You know, the second part of that is the taxes. You know, we, we've all talked about it, growth should pay for growth. And we're even getting ready to vote on having a consultant look at that for us, having growth pay for growth through impact fees. We're going to do that later tonight. So with that, you know, yeah, we can, it's going to raise up the, the cost of housing somewhat, but you can still buy a house that's not already brand-new. You can buy a one-year-old house, you can buy a 10-year-old house, there's fixed-up houses. You know, it'll run, drive the remodeling market. But what will happen in the event of increasing taxes to pay for this, because this stuff's still got to be done, the money's got to come from somewhere. You can't just not build a school while the county keeps approving stuff. So, what the taxes are going to do, we're going to raise taxes, like we already saw in Clover, they went up 30% with the bond. We're going to raise taxes on the elderly and the people on fixed income that have been living there for 100 years, well, maybe not that long, but maybe. And we're going to run them out of the area due to high taxes, because they can't afford to keep paying the taxes. You know, if you're moving to the area, you have a lot of choices. You have a choice to pay for that impact fee. You can buy an existing house, you can move across the district line into another district that doesn't have impact fees, you can go across the county line. But, you know, do you want your grandparents being priced out of, of their house at, you know, 70, 80 years old because the fee, the taxes keep going up? You know, that's one of the things we're going to look at. You know, we talk about affordable housing. Well, for the first thing is, with development impact fees, with the state law, affordable housing projects are allowed to be exempted from impact fees. So if somebody comes in and wants to do affordable housing, it's an allowable thing, and they won't have to do these. But if we're going to talk about affordable housing, have any of y'all read through our zoning code? We aren't helping affordable housing at all in this county. There is nothing that we have put in the zoning code that allows for that. So to make the school district go through and, and say, oh, well, we need to do, we need y'all to make a cut for affordable housing, I think that's just wrong. You know, somebody mentioned that we're having a three-and-a-half times increase on the impact, on the fee. It wasn't. It was 15,000 in 2020. Somebody arbitrarily picked a number and got that approved. That wasn't recommended by any of the consultants, it wasn't decided on by the school district, it was arbitrarily picked. And so to hold that number as the base for, say, and that this impact is, or this increase is, you know, three times or five times more, it does not count at all. You, you can't use that, picking apples and oranges and comparing the color of the fruit. And like, as Ben mentioned, we did the full impact fee for Fort Mill. Fort Mill has to build the same school, it costs the same amount of money, you know, per square foot. So the, the impact fees, you know, I would hate that we had chosen to give them that impact fee, and we went through all that, and then we decided that people that voted for that come in and say, well, we don't think this other district should, should get that amount of money just because. So, you know, ultimately, the main thing is, I don't think we should be telling the school district what to do. They have an elected board, they're a government entity, they have just as much power as we do for the most part, and that's, that's the end of my rant. Discussion.
Thanks, sir. Want to go down the line?
We can go this way.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll just say, we are, we've, it's this body that has to decide where the impact fee falls. We get the ultimate say as to what that number is. This body is charged with that. The school district don't get to decide it, the city, town of Clover don't get to decide it, this is on our plate. To set that number or not set that number, and we're not going to weasel our way out of it and, and say just because another body wants to do it. The school district didn't get to pick 15,000. The school district don't get to pick 20,000. The study indicates it where it falls, and it's incumbent on us, if we go with that number, we lower that number, meet in the middle, and fortunately for some, and unfortunately for others, that number was 4,000 at the last time. It don't take six people to make that number, it don't take seven people to make that number, only takes four people. So, I was on the board at the time, we came out with 4,000. I see we're in the middle of the impact fee, we have an option to amend it, or we have an option to leave it in place at the 4,000. Obviously, we see the apples and oranges being compared to Fort Mill and Clover. It's going to take Clover a heck of a lot longer to get there at 4,000. Fort Mill can get there like they're doing 95 on 85 with their 32,000, 31,000, whatever that $30,000 number is. I understand it costs to build the schools. My only concern, like I indicated earlier, can the market in Clover support an additional 11,000 on top of what we're doing now with the 4,000? Because I would hate for little Johnny, little Susie, family, give them some land, and ultimately he's gotten priced out because he can't take that 15,000 down to the planning department and pay 15,000 to build his home where his parents grew up, where he grew up, where he went to high school, where he wants to stay and remain to be in this community. That's a, that's something we got to argue with. That's, we got to, we got to balance that out. that out. And I'll be honest with you, there's enough votes right now to leave it at four thousand. There are four votes waiting to say, leave it at four thousand. I'm one of them, but I recognize we can do a little better than four thousand. So I want to offer an amendment right now to go from four thousand to seven thousand dollars. Is either seven thousand dollars, I think we can get through, but if it's fifteen, it's going to get killed or not. So I'll make that in the form of a motion that we amend it to seven thousand dollar impact fee.
So the amendment, is that for the single family?
Yes, starting with the single family and the, the rest of them can be prorated down like we done the first time.
Is that, I, I don't understand the legalities, is that, if, if that motion is made, does it have to be prorated down or can?
Yeah.
Okay. So as I understand the amendment, it's to seven thousand for single family with the others being increased prorata per the percentage increase from four to the seven?
Yeah, I haven't done the math on the numbers, but the seven is the highest and everything else below it, multifamily, mobile homes will fall in line how we had it set.
Can y'all do the calculation, but I think the, is the motion clear enough to move forward to determine if there's a second? Is there a second on the amendment?
Second. Oh, good, we get a new discussion on this. I appreciate that. Well, with, with that said, I would like to point out that-
Actually, we have to, we have to, a motion and a second on the amendment, do, do we debate it now or do we have to vote on the, go ahead and hear the discussion?
You have to debate it.
All right, we'll start it down the line again.
So, you know, it's been motion, mentioned that impact fees, you may just get there a little slower. I don't know that some people realize that impact fees have an ending mark, they don't last forever. You can't just sit at four thousand and eventually get to mile number one hundred and, or do a hundred miles an hour and get to mile one hundred quicker. Impact fees all have a, a time limit. So just saying, oh, well, we'll just eventually get there, you know, that's a, that's a big jump. Again, to go in here and say, well, can the market hold it, does the market not know it? You know, we're not up here to decide what the market can do and what it can't do. You know, we need to make sure that we're taking care of the residents and doing the best we can do with the residents. We've had a ton and a half of support coming in, probably ninety-nine percent support for this impact fee at the full amount and not just the fifteen thousand dollar amount, but the twenty-one thousand dollar amount. Everybody in the community, everywhere, except for a very small percentage, is requesting that amount. You know, we're, we're now talking about, there's a point one percent arbitrary number of people that live in the area that have land that want to give it to their parent, to their kids to build a house. You know, but we're going to ignore all the rest of the people that are highly impacted by the increase in taxes due to this. So that, I'm just going to say that I am a firm no on this amendment.
Still going this way?
Yep, let's keep going.
I, I'll say-
We're on the amendment now, so it's going to run it down.
I'll say, it's hard to get seven people to agree on one thing, let alone to get ninety-nine point nine percent people to agree on anything, anywhere. I'm married and me and my wife don't agree that much, but we still married. So let's be real, we're not arbitrarily pulling out, I think, taking into consideration what the market can bear, it's realistic, it's a realistic measuring stick to use, because we can price people out of their own market by adding fifteen. I think Fort Mill absorbed it because Fort Mill is right on the line, it's a heart market and people with money are moving into Fort Mill. That market has, didn't slow a bit, we added eighteen thousand, now we're up to thirty-two, it's, it's building more now than it did five years ago. So I think we're, we're kidding ourselves if we don't take into consideration, but I think I'm offering an olive branch because it's either seven thousand or you're staying at four thousand. Because we've read the tea leaves, I've talked to council members, and I'm telling you right now, there are four votes. If we don't agree to seven, it's going to be zero increase. So it's either move the ball forward or stay first in ten, fourth in ten. So I, I, I wish, and I haven't voted for an impact fee yet. I voted against the Fort Mill impact fee the first time. I voted against the Fort Mill impact fee the second time because the number was too high. The number was just too high for me to stomach, but the market kept on doing what it was going to do. So I'm saying it loud and clear now, it's either seven thousand or it's going to stay at four thousand. And I heard from people that reached out to me personally, who called me from the area. So I know that's not ninety-nine percent of the people saying they want it at fifteen thousand, there's no way. We don't even have seven on this council that's going to support fifteen thousand. So, and it's nothing personal, but I think we have to look at what we're doing to the market that's already doing this. I don't think it's cooling right now. And it's, the market is even pricing people out, let alone we throwing money on top of that that's going to cost, that's going to make it more costly. Maybe I'm wrong, but I can't be wrong at seven thousand, because I know there are going to be impacts to these grandmothers, these granddads, these seniors, who their home values are going to go up when we put in a fifteen thousand dollar impact fee. The study's not going to tell you that, the study can't tell you what the market can bear, it just tells you what, how to get there with the school cost. Everything has its limitation, I think that's one limitation that a study is, is, is put now, that it can't tell you, can the market in Clover bear fifteen more, eleven more thousand dollars on their new home construction? I just don't, I don't think it's the right move. So I'm at seven thousand, we can vote it up, vote it down, but if it's voted down, I'm voting against the fifteen.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To start, Councilman Litten, I just, I have to almost unilaterally, unilaterally agree with everything you said. So you saved me from having to say so much what you said, because I had mentioned to county staff, I don't understand why we're in the position to have to make this decision, why the state has placed us in this position. I can understand the county overseeing the funds and dispersing the funds for things that are eligible to reimburse, but for us to be in this position, I wholeheartedly agree and everything else you said as well. I was in a, I was in a meeting in the last two weeks where it was reported that the Charlotte region has a hundred and fifty-seven new residents a day. The Charlotte region has a hundred and fifty-seven new residents a day. That's, that's a bit overwhelming. When I joined council in 2023, York County was the second fastest growing county out of nine counties. I don't know where we are today, but 2023 was only two years ago. We were the second fastest growing county out of nine counties. Union County was first, York was sec, York County second, Mecklenburg County was third. So I have to wonder, those hundred and fifty-seven people, where are they going? I think some of them are coming into York County. Fort Mill and Clover had two of the best school districts in the state, so I would have think they attract some of those people. We just saw the housing permits that have been pulled. I'm not building a case for Fort Mill, I'm just trying to state the facts the way I'm, the way I see it. I was not on council when council voted to arbitrarily come up with a four thousand dollar number. I mean, you can't justify it. The number was fifteen and today we're having this conversation for the last hour, hour and a half, because the number was fifteen, it was voted at four. And now we're talking about seven, which they're still going to be short, which means the taxpayers are going to have to make up the difference, which goes back to what Councilman Litten said, those that are on fixed incomes are going to see an increase. Growth will not be paying for growth. A little sidebar, we passed a strategic plan here in York County. We all voted for the strategic plan and in the strategic plan it stated, we believe that growth should pay for growth. I, I believe we're putting the, this particular school district in a, in a compromising position where we didn't put Fort Mill in that compromising, compromising position. I will say, I am excited that we are going to begin to talk about impact, the impact of residential, commercial, industrial growth in York County, because all those building permits that are taking place are going to cause York County to have to figure out, how do we widen a road at over a million dollars a mile? How do we put turn lanes in? How do we put roundabouts in? How do we put stoplights in? We have, we have fire, police, sheriff's department, there's so many things we have to fund as a result of growth on the county level, just like the school district does. So all due respect, I, I can't support the seven and I realize that means probably we're not going to support the fifteen, but, but on a principled basis, I just, I don't, I don't agree with arbitrarily coming up with numbers, go with the hard numbers that you have. This reminds me of the rec tax when I joined council in 2023, not to bring up a sore subject, but a committee brings us numbers and then council decides to change the numbers. Anyway, I won't, I can't support the seven thousand either.
I'm going to go down the line, you want to start?
Yep. All right, Sheila and all the school board members, y'all know I care, but I've also stressed that I have never been for impact fees. And you're right, Andy, it ain't, it shouldn't be our decision. This is one of the most political things that we'll have to do probably for this entire year. And it also, is also noted fact, y'all don't take me wrong when I say this, but you can talk about the church and everything more than you can disagree with any of the school districts. But I've stressed how I feel about this. And Andy, I don't agree with you because you're dealing with-
I'm going to remind the council member, I hate to interrupt, and remind council members not to call out other council member names.
Okay. I do disagree because you're dealing with two different demographics and communities. And I've read the studies also, you can go online, you can look it up. It's shown that impact fees increase more national track builders, because the majority of people that can afford to get it is when the track builders are the ones that actually roll it in and finance it all for them. Which then it becomes a hurdle, because you ain't really stopping nothing, it just continues to grow and the school needs more and it, and we ain't solved no problem. But politically wise, this shouldn't be our decision, this should be the voters of that district's decision. Now, we stuck with what we got, I realize that, ain't nobody got to remind me of that. But I'm thinking about the difference, and, and, and I have talked to the people in Carolina to tell you, because they've been calling me right regular. You got your percentage over here in Lake Wiley that want it? But that's another thing said, and it may kick me in the face, but I want Clover to remain with its identity of being Clover, South Carolina. And, and there's a big difference, it does matter that those people that own land and their kids are generational and all been there. I was raised up in York County, my, my, my family's been here for generation after generation, originated out of the Appalachian Mountains that come down here. But I also pose this question to all y'all sitting out here, did y'all pay an impact fee when you started out?
Yes.
How long you been here?
We're not counsel, we're not, we're not going to ask questions of the audience, the audience can't engage.
My point that I'm making is-
No, we're not going to have any comment from the-
My, my point is that I'm making is, how are we saying if we do not solve these problems instead of just doing this and doing that? If we worried about educating these kids and having them a future, why are we doing everything that is discriminating from having a future? And I mean affordable housing, and I ain't talking about them, and another thing with the affordable housing, if you do knock the people out that are willing to buy a trailer and whatnot to live in, then you reach over into government housing, which that is more taxpayer money being paid to supply more government housing. And I, I mean, I'm, I'll, I'll even compromise and I'm against, I support what you said, Bump.
Thank you.
I really, I don't like it at all. And, and, and the track builders come in and they, they, they run all our local builders and everything out, but none of this makes common sense. And, and, and I even told members of the school board and all, I have been lobbying, but I, I, I also, and, and I don't want anybody mad at me whenever I, I, I say this, but I think that the state in itself should have like three different plans according to the population of schools that schools have to follow. When they building all these, but it is taxpayer money, no different than the fire departments and everything else. And I don't think, I, I, I'll support the, the seven and, and it took a long way to get me there. And I don't want anybody, I mean, it, you're, you're thinking about, the people that are moving in here have money. The people that preexist and all here ain't got the money. And it does affect them, and anytime you do raise the cost of a house, it's going to affect everybody living. My goodness, we just did a, a tax assessment that the state requires and, and it had to go up, it didn't go up just because it, boom, boom, we can raise it. But anyway, I'm shutting up.
Ms. Conjer?
Okay. Because I represent Fort Mill, Fort Mill did present, they came in and presented a capital plan with more schools, but Clover has not presented anything like that. So it's just not the same and I will support bumps, seven thousand.
Yeah, so I will be supporting bumps, seven thousand. I think this brings it to the concept of people that have property, single home, want a bill that keeps it still affordable for them to get it started and, and again, that's, that's big out in these, in the areas out there, so I think it's really critical. So I will be supporting seven thousand.
It's always interesting being on council. Impact fees have always concerned me because they aren't the panacea that everyone thinks they are, and I have to agree, it, the reason why we're having to do this is a failure at the state level of dealing with some very specific issues. I, I don't necessarily blame, and I don't blame the school districts for doing what they need to do, because they're, they need to justify to, to their constituents and their voters that they're trying to find resources from every place other than the existing taxpayers. I think the bigger question, and I, I do think that this needs to get resolved, but it, it's our job to do this. To me, we're at first reading, there's a lot of information that's been presented. I could say a lot of different things about how I feel about this, that, or the other, but I'm going to refrain from doing that tonight, because I think this is first reading. I would have supported first reading no matter what and continued the discussion, continued to move forward. I will, I will agree to support the amendment just to get this moving and get to the second, second reading and public hearing. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And that was on the amendment only, so we technically have to vote again on the, on the motion is what I'm being told from our parliamentarian. All those in favor of first reading with, well, and I, I would like to have one clarification, I, I went to law school, I didn't go to math school, so I tried to do kind of a calculation. It looks to me like we're talking about a seventy-five percent increase for each of the different categories. So just so, if anyone's done that math, I'm looking at the proposal as seven thousand for single family, thirty-four fifty-eight for the- family, 3458 for the multifamily, and 458150 for mobile homes. Is that, can somebody correct me, just, I guess somebody needs to do the math. Is that calculation doing 75?
That gives you the averages, the weighted averages at the bottom, is that correct?
It's doing a 75% increase.
Just 75.
75 across the board.
That's what I was thinking it was, just so that we're at least aware of kind of what the numbers are. It's shocking to me that manufactured is higher than multifamily, I don't understand, to me is counterintuitive. All is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I voted for the motion to go to second reading.
This is the main motion.
I know, I voted yes.
Wait a minute, do that again. Do that one again.
I've been told that the amendment was to amend the main motion, so we actually technically have to vote on it twice. Now, the motion is to approve what's been presented.
Seven, yeah.
Do you have the vote? Karen, did you get the vote down? Okay. All right, moving now to item number two, new business. Council to authorize contract negotiations regarding RFP 3012 for professional government relation services on behalf of York County government. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Keep going, let's go.
I will say, my understanding for management was that we intended to reject this because there's not enough funding to move forward. I guess I was under the impression that there had been discussion with council.
So- I haven't heard any discussion.
I've talked with some council members, I think what our understanding is that some of y'all wanted to revisit doing this, and so we're open to that. We're coming to you now because we're getting ready to do negotiations with potential lobbyists that bid. I think based on the conversations that we've had with council and others, there might be the opportunity to look at this a different way. I don't have the authority as a county manager to deny a bid like this because it's over the threshold that I can do, which is why I've talked with y'all about the opportunity. If you want to do something different, then council needs to initiate doing that.
I guess I'm trying to make sure that everybody's informed and that we skip through some of the problems. My understanding is that this was actually bid out. What came back can't be done within the budgetary constraints, so there's really nothing to negotiate with at this point. So, honestly-
I'd be glad to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'd be glad to withdraw the motion.
And to defer this.
And defer this for further conversation because all of council needs to be educated on the aspect of federal support lobbying and state, and the difference between the two, and decide what you want to support.
Thank you for the withdrawal of the motion, so the motion is to defer the matter until further discussion by council.
I think we've learned a lot about this and what we can and cannot do.
Right.
And I think part of this is spending time with y'all to develop your legislative priorities and us giving you options on how to achieve that.
Motion in a second.
Defer it to the next workshop.
Any other discussion on that?
No.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it will be deferred. Item number three, council to authorize contract negotiations regarding RFP 311 for capital improvements plan and impact fee study. Before we have a motion, my understanding from management, let's hear from you all is that this is another situation where this came back, we only had a single bidder and it was twice what was budgeted.
So, based on the scope that we put out there, as we go to negotiate, it's likely to be a lot higher than we've budgeted. I think anytime we only get one bid, it's an opportunity for us to take some time and recast it. As multiple council members said this evening, this was something that was brought up in terms of the strategic plan, which is why staff worked hard to get it out on the street when we did. When you only have one, you wonder, well, who else is out there and what can we do to make sure there's more applicants? And maybe it was something with our project scope. I'd let our CFO speak to that real quick.
Yes, sir. I was going to go talk to the pyramid director, she was out today, but I did talk with Jonathan, and there was another viable bidder that we did not specifically reach out to and let them know that this was coming. We do this all the time around here when we don't get enough bids in, we ask that y'all reject that bid, and we're going to go out there and shake the tree a little bit more and make sure we get some more bids in, so that's what we're asking you all to do tonight.
So, the goal on this one, though, is to put it back out again for a bid under-
After we do some more work, yes.
I think the options here are to defer it or to reject, I mean, which are essentially the same.
Motion to defer?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
You've received an RFP, so if you defer it, you're just evaluating that single RFP again, you need to reject it.
Okay, withdraw.
But we need to have the conversation about the whole issue, which we're doing at the workshop. So, I'm fine with either way. I think we're semantics here. If you want to move to reject it, that's fine.
I'll move to withdraw my motion and move to reject number three on our agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee and other reports, economic development committee, Chairman Watts Hookby.
Yes, ma'am. We had a successful economic development meeting a few weeks ago. Caroline Floyd presented from the economic development department about marketing, communication, and initiative they put forward, which was pretty impressive. We also had Trish DeHahn come to update us on York County Forever Nations Ford Land Trust, the accomplishments of the county over the years to garner thousands of acres that are being protected in conservation, which is a good thing. Tom Couch is working on our small area plan and corridor studies, so he came in and gave a report, an update on where we are at that process, which we've referred this back to council to further educate you all on what's going on with that. And then we had a presentation, executive session from Project Sample, and we're going to hear more about that tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Health and environmental protection committee meeting, Chairman Andy Litten.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We had our meeting on September 18th, and it was a very interesting meeting. We got a lot of good information about where our parks are, what the future plans are, and so after, you know, getting all of that information in, what our last kind of master plan entailed, we asked staff to develop a scope for a continuation of the master plan for the phase two portion of it, to bring back to us to look at so that we can have a path forward. Then we had some, you know, we talked about some funding and different things, and we've asked the staff to research foundation options, whether they be overall for the county or for just the parks, and the pros and cons of that. The foundation was discussed previously a few years ago and a plan for that was put together. Then we had York County Forever give us an overview of, you know, what they do and just how they interact with the public and what their future plans are, and so that was what we did.
Thank you, sir. Justice Public Safety Committee meeting, Chairman Tommy Atkins.
Yes. Justice Public Safety Committee, we met on September 24th, myself, Tom Odette, and Watts Hookby were present. The committee heard a report from staff regarding the EMS and the medical response in York County. Staff would like to define the county's role in the EMS system, develop a clear organized structure to focus on improvement, and adopt acceptable standards for care protocol and medical direction, create a path for BLS, AEMT, and ALS, and a tier system, and establish quality assurance and improvement with data shared. Committee members requested that the staff come back to the committee with a plan and show them a model within the next two months. The committee also provided with us the history of the radio system in York County. Staff would like to negotiate an additional maintenance contract with Motorola to meet immediate requirements, hire a consultant, and review the options and require and implement the alarming and paging system for first responders based on the consultant's recommendation. No actions were taken by the committee.
Thank you, sir. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. We do have a fairly lengthy executive session. Council member, new non-agenda comments before that? Do we have any?
Just a quick reminder that we are working on a public works committee meeting. I think we have a date in mind, I think we're on the 22nd, so we'll be meeting to talk about the new animal shelter as well as, I think we have the topic for the study that was done over in Fort Mill, so that's coming up.
Okay.
You go.
Yeah, okay. Real fast, October's a big month in Fort Mill. We have the best display of scarecrows in the whole county, so everybody's invited out to check that out, and Fort Mill History Museum has the most interesting tour of downtown Fort Mill, and you might see your favorite ghost. So, come and check that out.
All right, let's see. And I'm still waiting on what all ones did it, but I would like to congratulate the bands that competed and came home with awards this past weekend. And remember to visit and eat some barbecue at McConnell's Fire Department, their fall fundraiser is Saturday starting at 10:30 a.m., and Bethy Santiago's Department Fall Fund Raise will be next Saturday, 10:18, starting at 11 a.m.
So, just wanted to quickly talk a little bit about the new property tax bills that are going out. You know, as you know, on our property tax bills, there's a lot of different types of taxes on there. Again, there's more than just York County taxes that are part of it. But as far as York County taxes go, the county worked hard to help to offset the difference, again, in the property reassessment. Kevin, I don't know if you want to speak just a word about what we did in regards to that, to help the community with a offset?
Yes, sir. As we've talked to council about before, I think York County, again, as far as the percentage of their taxes rolled back more than anybody other entity in the county. I think for the first time ever, the city of Rock Hill rolled back their millage. I think this is one of the greatest participation we had in actually rolling back your millages. I cannot speak to the school districts in that regard, and that is, as y'all are unaware of, the largest line on your tax bill, though, but I don't have those numbers in front of me around school districts.
Yeah. Again, when you look at your tax bill, there's more than just York County tax on there, but again, Kevin, thank you for that explanation. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion for executive session?
I want to piggyback real quickly because I came prepared. I know, we need to get, I got a meeting at 11 o'clock tonight, so believe me, I'm ready to go. Tax notice, I do want to talk about that, too. I know some of this is driven by the state, and some of this is within our control, and every five years we have the assessment. What's confusing is, this first notice that goes out, obviously it says, this is not a tax bill. So, what you're being asked to do is look at the market value and agree to the market value so that we can calculate what your tax is going to be within a said period of time. I just wish between now and five years from now, we can figure out a better way to send this out so that residents aren't confused, because they don't understand the taxes. You just said, a lot of people think this is the York County tax bill, York County's assessing us this money. It's not York County, it's York County, the school districts, and the municipalities. Yes.
And just to clarify a couple of things over there, I think next time we're going to put watermarks up and down the page, this is not a tax bill. But one thing, your market value is not actually what your tax is on. Act 38, now the assessor's office has to keep your market value and then what your taxable value we can tax you on, and so there are two numbers on there to look at. And the reason why we have the tax bills go out, you know, a week or so after those is so people can understand the impact of that reassessment on their tax bill so they can make a better decision if they want to appeal. There is an appeal process that's outlined in there, and if the taxpayers feel like those values are not correct, that is their right, and I would encourage them to go through the appeal process.
And I would just add to that, that we work hard to try to make those two items come out close to each other so that you can see it. So, I think staff has worked hard in the past years to make that time difference. Real close, when you look at other counties, they probably send the assessment a lot earlier, right? So, I think we're trying to give that information in the same time period so that people can see that impact, and I think that's important.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. Our receipt of legal advice, legal matter litigation update, contractual matter, Project Sample, contractual matter, Project Ford, personal matter, county manager review, and lastly, receipt of legal advice, consideration of settlement agreement for project number 17228-12, track four, SC 161, US 21 slash S 50.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session. We will go into executive session.
Okay, that's not right, I'm sorry.
(laughter)
(inaudible)
Do I need to wait for something to show up?
Yep, ma.
It just went out, didn't it?
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yes, we do. We have five actually. First one, motion to approve mediation settlement agreement on Walter Investment Holdings LLC versus York County, case number 2024-CP-46-0430 as discussed in executive session.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non. Motion carries.
Motion to approve settlement agreement and mutual release in North Carroll Norman versus County of York, case number 2024-CP-46-00927 as discussed in executive session.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize counsel Andrew Lindman, Linderman, and York County Attorney to finalize settlement in appeal of Adams Outdoors Advertising Limited Partnership versus York County, case number 021-CV-037232-JDA as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non. Motion carries.
Motion to authorize filing of appeal of decision in Midway Baptist Church of York County versus County of York, case number 2023-CP-46-01467.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
None.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion to approve a renewed employment agreement with county manager with such terms and conditions as discussed in executive session.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non. Motion carries. I will just end with this. We are, as a council, very excited to have such a great county manager. We are, we are excited that you are here. We are excited that you're going to remain here for a, for a long time and we appreciate the good work that you've put in and I know that I speak for the whole council and we say thank you for, thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor say aye. Aye.